Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. Evening for November 7th. I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order, and before doing so, would like a special welcome to Nikon Wilson, who is joining us here from ECU. So, welcome. And if everyone could please stand for the invocation and the flag.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) pray eternal God, first of all, we come to thank you. We thank you for life, health, and strength. Blessed are you that you come into this meeting and direct our minds that we may do the things that will be pleasing to you. In the holy name we pray. Amen.
(inaudible) please.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
(inaudible).
It has been moved and properly seconded. If everyone could vote, please. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Manager, do we have any public addresses to the board this evening?
One person signed up to speak, Mr. Jeff Monaco. The attorney would read the statement.
Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. Please state your name and address prior to beginning your remarks. You'll be allowed three minutes per speaker. If you're speaking on behalf of a group that is present, please identify that group, and I will extend your time to five minutes. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Monaco. I live at 3837 Lockhaven Lane in Grimesland, and I am Chair of the local group of the Sierra Club, the Cypress Group with the National Sierra Club. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the Economic Development Proposal, actually against, I should admit, the Economic Development Proposal. So, I am against the Economic Development Proposal solely because, from what I read in the agenda and the public notice, nothing is said about protecting the environment. Now, that being said, economic development is important, and it is necessary, absolutely. If Pitt County is not improving, adapting, and moving ahead economically, it is falling behind other counties. So, we need to move forward with economic development. Also, however, improving and adapting and moving ahead are also required in the areas of environmental health and environmental justice. Eastern North Carolina and the United States have, in the last 50 years, made tremendous improvements in the treatment of our natural environment. Laws and legislation from both sides of the political aisle have allowed great improvements, added considerable protections for the environment, and helped guide other nations that inhabit our planet with us. We cannot be complacent, however. Because industries continually change, and because our understanding of the natural world is increasing each year, the ways we interact with the environment must also change and improve. Ignoring these environmental realities is bad. A better idea is considering the balance of industry and the environment. That is, meaning, we need jobs, and we need good opportunities to live well in a clean environment. The natural environment is a very, very large part of our lives. My support of this economic development plan is contingent on words being included that say impacts on the environment related to economic growth will be reviewed, and negative environmental effects will be mitigated. Negative effects can be mitigated by things such as pushing for the reduction of fossil fuels, use of fossil fuels in Pitt County, demanding environmental justice for those in the county feeling the worst of climate change, pushing our state legislature to do more to improve the environment for everyone. Most industries are willing to support the environment if they feel they have a level playing field. And if we do legislation that keeps the playing field level and improves on the environment, industry will buy in. Then the fourth item would be helping our communities become more resilient to impacts of climate change. If we've done this in the past, we need to continue with these efforts. So, in summary, economic development plans must protect the future by balancing business growth and environmental interests for all of us who live in Pitt County.
Thank you. Madam Manager, do we have anyone else signed up?
There's no one else signed up to speak.
All right. If we can move on to Department Spotlight, Veteran Services.
Mr. Chairman, tonight's Department Spotlight will be presented by Channing Ford with Veteran Services, and we chose her especially this week since it is Veterans Day later this week.
Good afternoon, everyone. Veteran Services, we will be presenting Department Spotlight. As it reads here, our mission of Pitt County Veteran Services is to assist the veterans and dependents in applying and maintaining their VA benefits that they are eligible Just to give you a little bit of where we're located, some still don't know where we are located. We are located over in the Development Services Building, right across the street. The Pitt County Veteran Services Office is ran by three full-time accredited service officers. Channing Ford, the office manager.
Trina Williams.
And we do have a third service officer who is not able to be with us this evening. The office was originally ran by Teresa Ball, who retired in January of last year. Just to give a brief overview of what we do do, what we do in our department, and how we assist the veterans of Pitt County, we assist them by filing service connected compensation claims, wartime pension claims, we assist with burial claims, widows benefit claims, certification for home loan eligibility, assisting the veterans in applying for closing allowances, assist the veterans with signing the permission forms for granting them the disabled veteran plates and the partial property tax exclusion, because they get a hundred percent, veterans get a partial property tax exclusion on their taxes. So, the state has given us permission to sign off on those forms now. Veteran Services, we do outreach as well. We have done outreach presentations to Council on Aging, we have been over to the Greenville Outpatient Clinic, the local Pitt County Fair, local employers. We have done outreach to the homeless veterans, we've been to local churches, the Greenville Convention Center, and to American Legion. We have also made presentations to our in-house employees also that maybe assist veterans or are veterans, and they work with veterans. We work closely with nursing homes, assisted living facilities, funeral homes, Department of Social Services, Pitt County, and Social Security, NC Words, Vida Health, which is now ECU, and other Department of Social Services in other counties that we work with closely as well. We do receive donations from local organizations. Last year, we got donations from Greenlamp, and the year before that, we had got donations, I think maybe it was from a couple years ago, from BB&amp;T. They usually donate food and toiletries so that we can give it out to our veterans as they come in. And this year, we're on the list again to get donations from Greenlamp again this year. We will get those donations in December. Just as for the veteran population here, according to the National Center of Veteran Analysts, as of 2021, the close of 2021, we had about 11,000 veterans, a little over 11,000 veterans here in Pitt County. As far as our workflow within the office, at the end of, for the fiscal year 2122, we submitted 273 claims to the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs. Client contact, we've had 4,500, we keep track of our client contact. In-person, 994. And since COVID hit, you know, at some point, we was limited on how we can reach our veterans, but we still maintain through fax, email, phone, limited appointments to get, to provide the services that they needed. Of those claims that were submitted to the VA, 113 claims were awarded, generating a million and, a little over a million dollars. The hot topics here that we deal with, that's hot now, that we deal with is, and I'm sure everybody has heard about this, is the Camp Lejeune water contamination for the veterans and the family members. Veterans that served in Camp Lejeune for a consecutive 30 days between 1973 and in 1987, they can possibly be awarded benefits if they are diagnosed with certain medical conditions. The PAC Act, which is hot as well, which is affecting the Gulf War veterans with the airborne hazard and the burn pit exposures, and there were some other things added for the Vietnam veterans as well due to Agent Orange exposure. So, a lot of those, we are seeing a lot of those claims come in, we have already started processing those claims. We have started sending in those claims, but the VA will not start processing those claims until January, so we've told. We're still getting direction from the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs on how to handle those claims, but we welcome them all, so we can get them all in. But that's, that's a, you know, brief overview of what we do and what we will continue doing for our veterans of Pitt County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.[761.31][761.31](applause)
Madam Manager, moving on to Operation Greenlight.
Yes, as the board knows, we join the National Association of Counties in Operation Greenlight, which is an effort to honor veterans and shine a light on some of the incredible sacrifices that they've made and challenges that they face as veterans in our nation. And in September of this year, the board adopted a resolution that I'd like to briefly read, and then after that, I would like to thank those veterans in our community, and especially those veterans who are county employees as well. But the resolution reads, whereas the residents of Pitt County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces, whereas the contributions and sacrifices of men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas Pitt County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health disability and compensation benefits each year, and whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and whereas studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during the transition from military service to civilian life, and whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service, and whereas the National Association of Counties encouraged all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Greenlight for veterans, and whereas Pitt County Board of Commissioners appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes this specific recognition should be granted, now therefore be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners hereby supports Operation Greenlight by lighting the county courthouse green during the period from November 7th through November 13th, 2022, the week of Veterans Day, the time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. And be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Greenlight, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of your place of business or residence during the week of Veterans Day, November 7th through 13th. This resolution was shared with all municipalities in Pitt County, and many have joined this effort, including the City of Greenville, who will light their bridge green this week, and the Village of Simpson. This was adopted the 12th day of September 2022, signed by Chairman Mike Fitzpatrick, approved by the board, and attested by Kimberly Heinz Clark to the board. With that, we extend our heartfelt gratitude and thanks to all veterans in our community and in the nation, and especially those who are employed with Pitt County government.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearings, Ms. Andrews.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
In consideration of Project Pitt's planned expansion to include $100 million in investment at their existing Pitt County facility, as well as the retention of 189 existing jobs with an average annual salary above the Pitt County average, we are recommending an economic development grant in an amount equivalent to 50% of the net increase in adwarem taxes paid by the company for a five-year period with a cap of $1.8 million. For the Pitt County expansion project, the $100 million is budgeted specifically for the modernization of their existing facility, including the building and equipment. The investments are planned to not only increase the output and quality of end products and ensure the efficiency and safety of operations, it will also provide upgrades that directly address their environmental sustainability goals. The Pitt County facility is one of several locations in North Carolina slated for modernization by the corporation, one of the world's largest forest and forest products companies, and in business for over 100 years. The corporation, in a report released in May 2022, noted that they had exceeded the targets in their environmental sustainability plans by reducing emissions by 57% compared to year 2000 levels. They've also set aggressive reduction targets for 2030 in line with a net zero goal by 2050. The Pitt County location is currently in compliance with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. This incentive would be contingent upon investment of $100 million and the retention of 189 existing jobs in Pitt County. In addition, a grant agreement will be required to include these contingencies, as well as require full compliance with NCDQ during the grant period to receive the incentive, and noncompliance would be grounds for termination of the grant. We respectfully request that you move to approve the incentive for Project Pitt for the consideration described and with the contingencies documented in a legally binding incentive agreement to be developed by the county attorney and executed by the county manager.
Thank you very much. At this time, go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Manager, do we have anyone signed up?
No one is signed up to speak.
She said she needed an approval here.
At this time, being that no one has signed up, I'll close the public hearing and would entertain any motions.
I'd like to off the motion to approve this.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. If everyone could vote.
(inaudible) chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess I shouldn't have said it at the very beginning, but the gentleman that spoke during the public, during the public address period town, spoke on environmental issues, so I guess he was kind of addressing the, in fact, he did say he was addressing the economic development incentives.
Yes, ma'am. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on, Mr. Kroom.
Good evening, Chairman.
Good evening.
Commissioners, Manager, Gallagher. Tonight, I bring you another good news item to the board. In Pitt County, receiving the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for Fiscal Year 2022-2023. This award is the highest form of recognition for governmental budgeting, and it recognizes our budget being rated as proficient as a policy document, financial plan, operation guide, and a communication device. I am honored to be part of a budgeting team in a county that has received this award for 26 consecutive years. There is no action required tonight by the board, and this report is just for informational purposes only. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Moving on to the manager's report, Madam Manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the board, your next meeting dates, November 21st at 6:00 p.m. and December 5th at 6:00 p.m. in this room. A reminder of the Register of Deeds Open House, which will be held on November 10th, 2022, at 3:00. If you'll come at 3:00 sharp, a few minutes thereafter, the Register of Deeds will provide some welcoming remarks, and then open up the facility for tours for the remaining, for the next hour. So, we look forward to seeing you and members of the public there. Your third item, the Legislative Goals Conference, as a reminder, will be held November 16th to 18th in Wake County, and several members of the board have been signed up to attend. You'll get your details on that conference seminar from the clerk. Item D is an update on shift differential pay. On July 18th of this year, the board considered a request for shift differential pay from the sheriff's office and heard a presentation from then CFO Brian Barnett on different options for differential pay, and this board motioned that county staff bring back a policy to implement a $1 per hour shift differential pay for the sheriff's office, detention center, 911 operators, and EMS paramedics to be implemented January 1st. Staff has worked together on that project, including the Financial Services Office, the Human Resources. We prepared a policy for implementation and a budget to support that policy, roughly costing about half a million dollars. We presented it to the Emergency Management Director and to the sheriff for review. After that review, the sheriff shared that the dollar per hour shift differential pay does not meet her expectations for her request. She said it would not justify permanent shifts at the detention center. She renewed her request for an across-the-board 10% pay increase for her officers, and indicated to me that the dollar an hour shift differential that we had prepared in policy was not satisfactory to her. So, I'm coming back to the board to say that it would be my recommendation that we not spend a half a million dollars on something that's not going to solve a request, answer a request, or solve a problem, and ask the board to pause further consideration of differential pay at this time, if the board would be so inclined and happy to answer any questions. I did talk with the sheriff about this ahead of time. I shared with her my remarks this evening and what I would say, and she was in agreement to that.
Do we need a motion?
I do.
So, this one department, and I think when we had this discussion, we were really concerned that if we were going to give differential pay, then it was appropriate that we give it to all of our first responders at the county, and not highlighting one over the other. I still feel very strongly about that. And if we only have one department that's descending from that, I'm hesitant to move in a direction where we back away from that commitment to the other departments.
So, I did speak with the Director of Emergency Management, who spoke with his staff about it as well. They would like to be treated the same as, they did not initiate a request for shift differential pay, and they were fine with the policy as it was presented, but what they said is, we want it, if the sheriff's office is getting shift differential pay, we want to be treated similarly. If they're not, we are not making a request for it. And so, based on that, I form a recommendation to the board. I understand what you're saying, though.
So, how do we pause? I mean, do we have to kill it and then resurrect later, or how do we do that?
So, the sheriff would like an opportunity to speak to the board at a future date to renew her request for a 10% pay increase across the board, which she sees as shift differential pay. So, right now, we have the board's motion and directive to me and staff to implement this effective January 1. To me, the pause is that we, that you relieve me of the directive to implement this January 1, and that you consider this at such time, the sheriff comes before the board or in your next budget negotiations, if that's the appropriate time to do so. I did share with the sheriff that mid-year, I could not support or justify a 10% pay increase for the sheriff's office mid-budget year, because there wouldn't be enough funds in this year's existing budget to cover that cost. She understood my position on that. She renews her request in support of her officers.
So, if we vote to kill it?
So, I think you have a couple of options. You can tell me, no, I want you to continue to go forth, even though it's not what's desired by the sheriff, or you can pause it for now, or you can kill it.
And your recommendation is to pause it?
My recommendation is to pause it.
And then it can be brought up again at budget time, right?
Yes.
Instead of now, in the middle of this year, which has already been budgeted?
Do we, and if it is paused, does it keep us from, say, we pause, we consider that position, would it put us in a position where we're not prepared to act and implement on January 1, if that's how the commission sees fit after that pause? Does it put us behind the ball on that?
For January 1, '23, it would put you behind the ball on that. So, if you are anticipating something moving forward for January 1 of '23, what I would have done was brought back to this meeting, the proposed policy for review, the budget amendment, and the plan for implementation. If you don't pause, I'll bring that back to your next meeting, and you can consider it and move forward for January. If it's not brought off, brought back by next meeting, it's not feasible to implement for January 1 of '23. It's a significant budget expenditure that will not meet the request of the sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to kill it.
I second it.
(inaudible).
And then I'd like to also say with that second, that certainly bring it forward when we look at our next year's budget, and we will all be expecting it, and know that.
Mr. Kroom.
Janice, now, right now, it's the sheriff department that sort of don't want to move forward with this, but the other employees, that's, that's, will be affected by this too, the emergency, and they don't, they don't have a concern about not, not implementing, and of course, they want to do it, I'm thinking. Is there any way that we can continue this and, and look in turn, I don't know, this may not, may not be the right way of doing it, but to continue this and to deal with the sheriff department concerns at a later time. But yet, it seems to me that we may be having all the other employees suffer for the lack of not moving forward because of the sheriff department. That's my concern.
Yes, so there is a limited number of 911 center in Florida can help me. I don't know the total number of employees who would be impacted, 911 center and your paramedics, your EMS paramedics. The question is, could we, could we authorize a dollar an hour shift differential for those entities and pause for the sheriff? That's, yes, it would, you could do that as an option. It might seem inequitable across the organization, though, because then you'd look at one getting it at night and the other not. I'd rather address it as a package, and I think that those in 911 and emergency management, and I don't want to speak for Randy Gentry or for those folks, of course, no one's going to turn away extra money, but I think that they are satisfied they're in their employment, grateful for the 4% cost of living that they received this year, grateful for their merit increase that they received this year, grateful for the degree of flexibility that they have in their schedules, have had open, respectful, honest communication about their needs throughout the year, and I feel like they were genuine with me when they said, letting, when Randy said, letting this go is not an issue for us right now. We just want to be treated fairly. If you're going to give it to somebody else, give it to us also. If you're going to give it to somebody else, give it to us also, but we're not asking for it.
I'd like to ask Commissioner Coulson, when you're talking about killing it, what does that mean?
It means that the request is completely withdrawn, we're not going to do it. If they, if we get presented something next budget time, that'll be a separate issue, but as far as what has been worked out now, what staff has worked on, is if this means that we stop and it no longer exists, we're not going to move forward with it at all.
Until?
I want, I want to remind the Board, if you remember when we voted on this, we did not actually issue an amount at the time. The staff was asked to come back and present a number. But if you remember the mashing of teeth and the wringing of hands by certain parties that law enforcement would not be able to provide services in Pitt County if they didn't get this shift differential and went on and on and on, well, we gave it to her. Now, my question is, she can say the dollar's not enough, but, I mean, we gave it to her, and now she doesn't want it. That makes me wonder what her motive really was.
Mr. Chairman, I still feel like that this needs to be brought forward during budget time period, you know, and not brought up in the middle of the year when we already have our budget in place. And I think that's what most of us are feeling.
So it means that that can come up?
Sure. And it can come up again.
Killing it sound like it's dead and dead, you can't resurrect.
I would use the word kill or dead. I have said.
At this point, I believe we have a motion on the floor. If everyone could go ahead and say a motion.
To discontinue it.
Oh, okay.
And the last item is just to provide an update as we enter into cold and flu season on our OptumServe COVID test site. As you may recall, on September 2nd, 2022, in partnership with the Pitt County Public Health Department, Optum Serve opened a COVID-19 testing site in the parking lot of the Technology Enterprise Center. That site continues to operate on Mondays and Tuesdays from 10:00 to 5:00, and Fridays and Saturdays from 10:00 to 5:00. From September until October 31st, they performed 195 tests, and they remain available to members in our community who need COVID testing at that site. That's all that I have.
Thank you. At this time, entertain a motion to approve the items for consent. So move. Second. It's been moved improperly second. If everyone could vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like, the consent items, I would just like to, that we just voted on, to say that a couple of those that I would like to just mention, and of course, we just got to talking about the Register of Deeds Passport now, and I think that's a great service to the citizens of Pitt County, you know, because of all of the problems we've had with postal services, so that is a really a great asset. Also, in talking about the animal service that, that new program, I believe this, this citizens have done this before, paid for this program before, and, and, you know, when we have a citizen that will take up a project like that, I just think we just need to say something about, about that to, you know, just let citizens know that, that they can do something like this, and that, and that it is appreciated. So I don't know if you want to say something about it. And the, I think, oh, the ECU help, if the manager wanted to just say something else about that, that agreement.
I think, I think you covered it.
That we really appreciate that, and it's a good, good thing.
Thank you.
I know we, you know, we pass it as a package deal, but sometime we need to kind of mention some of the things in that package deal to let the citizens know some of the good things especially that we are doing. You know, they don't get to see this, they don't get to see what we see.
Well, thank you for bringing that to everyone's attention. Moving on to items for decision. Madam Manager.
We need to select a voting delegate for the NCAA legislative goals conference in November. On page 110, you have five folks attending. Commissioners McLoghorn, Coulson, Floyd Huggins, and Perkins Williams.
Mr. Manager, I nominate Tom Coulson.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second.
I was going to get Ann to do it.
She beat you to it. The motion passes.
She just had a little feeling over here.
Ann's been doing it.
But Ann did such a great job, she really is, honestly.
Good evening, Chairmembers of the Board. This is a small housekeeping item, literally. This is the change of the existing housekeeping contract with ECBC for the addition of the Register of Deeds building on First Street, as well as the changes in the Sheriff's Office space from Ninth Street to Stanford. So this is the net increase of square footage on that contract, which relates to about $8,200 of funds for the year needed to meet the total housekeeping budget for the county. So tonight, just asking for approval for this additional $8,200 out of contingency four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Motion passes unanimously. And finally, Madam Manager, comments to the Human Relations Commission?
Yes, based on the recommendations from the municipalities, you're being asked to appoint Councilwoman Monica Daniels as the City of Greenville representative and Councilwoman Veronica Roberson as the Town of Winterville representative on the Pitt County Human Relations Commission.
Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
We had a lot of, it has been moved improperly second.
Sound like we getting to the end.
Are we in order to close?
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Coulson.
No comments.
Commissioner McLoghorn.
I'd like to encourage everyone to please vote. Everything is on the ballot, so we need to exercise our right to vote, so please vote.
Commissioner Perkins, one.
I'd like to say that we have three holidays coming up, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. I think it would be a wonderful present to ourselves if we become mindful again of how we appear with trash along the highway. I know I haven't spoken about it in some time, but when I was riding on Martin Luther King Boulevard today, I saw a real recliner sitting on the side of the highway. Now, we need to let our visitors know that we care about the place we call homes. So let's work on the trash, and I know we have something in the keel for that, but we can start, so by the time that come up, we can be looking pretty.
Thank you. Commissioner Nunnly?
No comments.
Commissioner White?
I would also like to encourage everybody to get out and vote if you have not already done so, and I just want to extend my support for Operation Greenlight and the resolution. I'm glad that we supported that, and I want to thank all the veterans out there for their service to our country, and Happy Veterans Day.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Fountain found some green lights, and thank you again for doing that. We also have a program on Veterans Day, too. Thank you.
I didn't hear but two municipalities who said they wanted to do it.
Just want to say, same thing as Commissioner White said, you know, we thank all of the veterans, and we just, you know, we're just really ready and we want to, we're glad to participate in the green light, so, and so, and go out and vote.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Go out and vote, and that's my only comment.
At this time, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second. Everyone could vote.
Is it 7:00?
No.
Motion passes.